Thank you very much for coming, everyone. Welcome to the September 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Anthony Bowen, I'm the Vice Chair. Our Chair Roddy Yakin is absent tonight, so while we conducting tonight's meeting, start by taking role. Bill Komski.
I am here.
Suzanne Spellin.
Here.
Stephen Maples.
Here.
We, as I said, do have our Chair Roddy Yakin and Sarah Wangert is not expected to be here tonight. James Raff not here currently, although I think you are expecting him to join. So we'll just start by a review of last month's meeting minutes. Did all the commissioners get a chance to review them? All right, so I moved that we adopt the meeting minutes as they are, unless anybody has any amendments.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. So moved, the minutes are approved. All right, moving on, our first item of business is old business. This is PLPC 2023-39, 1011 Second Avenue. Do you have the African presence?
Yes, present.
Thank you, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name for the, for the record.
Yep, my name is Derek Gribulis, I'm an architect at Cowler Architecture, and I'm going to be presenting some architectural changes to one of the buildings. We just tried to get this to work. Launch meeting.
You need help, so.
Working with computer audio, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, you can, you can, you can mute it.
Yep. I guess I'll just share the screen, it might be a little easier.
This, there it is, that disgusting vision.
That's horrible. Even the like horrible.
If you're on Zoom, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself.
That's really bad.
Mm-hmm. Do you have? Everyone has been muted, the presentation is muted. Please unmute the presentation. Can you unmute in the council chamber? Please unmute in the council chamber.
Go ahead.
I'm going to stay muted.
Everyone is here for the presentation.
Can you?
Yes.
Looks like, okay, go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, so some of the comments were like about the building being a little bit too busy, maybe too broken up. The, the gables on the building were not received well. Perhaps just breaking the building up too much. So I just wanted to run through these. So we received positive feedback on the white and the blue colors, which I'll talk about a little bit later when I show you the, the new proposed. So I just wanted to run through these older ones first, and the brackets on the balconies were also kind of not, not well received. So I wanted to just give a recap of that before I went on to the new renderings. So we took the feedback that we got at the last meeting, made some adjustments to the design. Started by consolidating some of the colors, really just going with three different kinds of cladding colors excluding the stone, the stone remains, we're trying to use more of it where we can. Going with more of a white grayish, blue and gray color palette. And also trying to use those colors to tie the building together a little bit more. We changed the top story cladding color to be white throughout, except for in a couple spots where it felt like the, the accent of the, a type of a facade called it, called for the color to be broken there, which you can see here. We changed the color scheme, changed some of the roofs to really better tie the building together, make it read as more of one building. This is a closer view of the front of Building A, which is the only building I have today, because I wanted to get some feedback on this building before we move to Buildings B and C. It's another view of the front. This is on the riverside of Building A, which is a long rectangular building. Took another look at the roof scheme on this side, tried to come up with something a little bit more uniform, but broken up like once in a while, and introduced some reverse shed gables with some accent brackets in some, some areas, just to try to break up some of the monotony of the building. And because the back of the building facing the, facing the river hides balconies, which were inset into the building, which helps break up, break up the mass, and also gives us an opportunity to do some different things with the roofs where the building goes in and out. So this is a view of the rear. The updated facade. And then that's the rear completed, the overall rendering of the rear. Can see that we changed the roofs in the color scheme quite a bit, just to try to give it a more of a residential open feeling, to try to take advantage of, of the views along the river, trying to open it up a little bit more. A little bit more rhythm to it than before, to kind of make it seem, read as, as one building, but break it up enough that it wasn't one giant mass. So you can see here, open up some of these roofs with these reverse sheds that go back towards the low slope roof in the center of the building. And then that's the overall of the front, which includes some design elements from the rear. And this is just a initial schematic of the sign. I know that the sign was talked about last time, what did the sign look like? So thinking here, something simple, but using similar materials as the building, like with the cladding, tie it together, just kind of monolithic. And we were talking last time about potentially activating the rooftop with, with a patio of sorts, but we're restricted to a, to a height of 50 feet, which would prevent us from bringing up a stair tower and elevator for accessibility. We were asked to look at a ramp that would go from the fourth floor up to the roof, which I just did some quick calculations and it's, it's quite a, it's just, it's just going to be a, a really, really long ramp. It's going to dominate the fourth, the fourth level in plain layout. Estimating got to go up about 144 inches, so that means 140 feet, 44 feet long, but every 30 feet, we got to introduce a five foot landing. So I got a, I calculated about 169 feet long for this ramp, which would be like, probably 60% of the length of the building, which doesn't seem feasible to me without. Reactivating the rooftop would really require the elevator and the stair tower to go up, in, in my opinion. So we looked into all that after we received some feedback at the last meeting. So I just wanted to, you know, hear more feedback on our changes and, and go from there. Thank you. John, do you want to add anything?
All right, thank you. So this is noticed tonight for a public hearing. I know we have a lot of members of the public who are here to comment. But I will give commissioners an opportunity to weigh in on any of the, the design changes that they'd like to now, or if you want to wait to hear from the public.
I don't wait to hear what the public has to say.
Yeah.
All right. With that said, I think we'll open this up for the public hearing. So as I said, I know we have a lot of members of the public who did come to speak tonight. I think it'd be helpful, Eric, give us some paper, we can get people to sign it and just, we can keep an order going. Okay, so any of members of the public who do want to speak on the record tonight, please just go see Eric, write down your name. And if, yeah, well, you don't need to write your address on the sheet, we'll have that stated for the record. Just write your name, please, and then pass the sheet along. So first person who signed up can go ahead and get the podium. So again, just for a reminder, please keep your comments limited to no more than two minutes. State your name and address for the record before you start, and try not to repeat comments that were made by previous members of the public, just so we can keep things moving. I know there are a lot of people here to speak tonight. Thank you.
My name is Dan Curry. I reside at 1530 Tibbetts Avenue. I'm also a local history teacher for the Troy City School District. And when I teach US history, we cover the local, the local history, and we go back to indigenous history of the Stockbridge and Muncie people. And I just worry about the development of this site, primarily because if it is taken away, a whole generation of students will not have any local, local connection or an ability to be able to witness the land that the Stockbridge and Muncie Nation inherited and spent centuries protecting. And I think it would be a shame not only to our students within this district in Lansingburg and Troy, but our future generations to lose this precious site. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you can come on ahead.
Good evening, my name is Harsha Patel. I'm an RPI student, so my address has shifted constantly. So now I'm living at 2117 Verted Avenue, that's my current apartment. And I came here as sort of an educational opportunity, just learning, as, as the previous speaker said, about the history of Stockbridge Muncie, and really only experiencing it at an academic level. But my exposure to downtown Troy is, is very limited, limited in the sense that, limited in the sense that we really don't get to hear the stories of the people that, that lived here. I'm talking about the indigenous people. And having a, a monument to something that is, that is far removed from the historical context of Troy before its founding is, is something of an intrigue to me as, as a scholar and, and intellectual. So I'm, I'm just sort of curious as, as to what the motivations were behind this, this apartment building, if not for profit or financial motives, you know, the original respect and dignity allotted to the indigenous people.
Thank you. So next we have Larissa Boraglam.
Hello, my name is Larissa Boraglam. I live at 9 Putnam Street. I'm an environmental activist and a public policy student at U Albany. Besides the disrespect to the Mohican people who called the Mohican Tuck or the Hudson River home for thousands of years until white settlers forcibly relocated them to what is now Wisconsin, to destroy the forest would be to destroy an important ecosystem that ultimately helps to keep our community safe. Old growth trees store carbon, provide much needed shade in the hot summer months, and when on the banks of a river, help act as a buffer against flooding. In short, old growth forests protect us from the effects of climate change, and so it is urgent that we protect them in return. The Troy City Council disappointed me, to say the least, when they voted in favor of destroying the sacred forest to build overpriced apartments, despite the massive public backlash there had been. According to some reports, the Troy City Council had never received so many concerned emails about a local issue. The only decent person on the council was Kiani Conley Wilson, who went against the grain and actually listened to what the people wanted. I realize that as a planning commission, you do not necessarily have the power to call the project off, but I hope you will listen to us when we implore you to at least protect the most ecologically and culturally important parts of the forest from destruction. I refuse to call it development. Please have a conscience and listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jess Bennett.
Hey. Well, if this is good, I'll, I'll stick with it here. Thank you for taking the opportunity to listen. My name is Jessica Bennett, and I live at 1009 Second Avenue. So I'm an immediate adjacent neighbor to this property. And I'm going to speak as fast as I can to get in the two minutes, but I do have some things I want to say. In 2019, October, I bought my first home. I'm a small business owner and longtime farmer's market vendor. And Troy is my chosen home, of which I'm very proud, especially as the daughter of a history teacher. This place is like a candy land to me. A month after I moved in, I woke up and there were men in my side yard, and I went out there and instead of being hostile, they were archaeologists. And they were there to do a, a survey for Harkin, which I'm sure you all have copies of, but they spent about an hour just telling me how important this site is as an untouched, pre-contact site. They didn't need to spend that time with me, it was evident how important this was to them, especially since that there has never been any development on this site. There are no ruins of foundations, there has never been any clear cutting of this land. And I was able to do some historical research with the help of Kathy Sheehan at Hart Buitt, which I'll get to in a minute. They were also the ones who alerted to me that this is a national register eligible site. And instead of what we've heard from the developers team, that that's kind of something that any old area actually is eligible for, they drove home why this is actually so important on this specific site. As you well know, it is an indigenous quarry site, that's how it's register eligible, and it's been in use for about 7,000 years. We have archaeology records and papers that go, that date certain artifacts on the site to 3,000 B.C. These are Mohican homelands, but at the confluence of the Mohawk and Hudson Rivers, we know that this area was used as a highway for thousands of years. Though collections were closed during the pandemic, we were still able to research artifacts that had been treated as far west as the Mississippi and Michigan, and as far south as Delaware. Given more time, we'd love to spend a lot more time finding that. In April 2020, this project was initiated and really started us speaking to neighbors. And being that it was lockdown, I went door to door and spoke outside with every single resident of this neighborhood. There's about 300 people that live there, and nearly all of them opened their door to me. And I can tell you without hyperbole, every single resident is against this development. They spoke to me about how they use this site, how their children grew up here, and how this site impacted them, how they get up in the morning and take a walk there, hunt, fishing, access to the river, and it, it really kind of sounded like what every other resident for at least over 150 years has been using this site for.
We are after over two minutes, just so you know, so if you could wrap it up.
All right, I'm going to wrap it up. As you well know, the heavy hitters in conservation have been against this project for the last nearly four years. Riverkeeper, Scenic Hudson, and so many others, the Sierra Club. I urge you to go back into the council notes, which is probably really outside of what you typically do, and look at their reasoning for wanting to preserve this site. But that's not really what's in front of you at the moment. This project, under your purview, is completely out of scale with the neighborhood. This is too big, this is, I believe it's a single family neighborhood anymore. But if you go and see the site, which I absolutely urge you to, you will see that this does not belong there. However, the Price Chopper site, an eighth of a mile south, which is a light on the neighborhood, would be a perfect site for it. The, the footprint is too large. We, I request that you reduce the buildings from three to one, which is also echoing, echoing the Rensselaer County Planner's Letter, which is to reduce the buildings, move them close to the road to avoid the archaeology. I got an email from a supporter today who reached out and spoke with someone at SHPO, who says they don't have this project anywhere on their affected termination project list. And given the historical significance of that, I absolutely urge that that be worked out before you all vote on it. I am the named, I am the named person in a lawsuit as the adjacent owner, where I have sued the City Council of Troy to object to their, to challenge their negative declaration, saying this environmental review is done and poses no potential environmental impact with the clear cutting of this forest, as well as challenging the rezone of this. That litigation is ongoing, and I ask for this body, because of the significance ecologically, archaeologically, and all of the things that are also seen under SECRE, to sit on this issue and wait to vote on the finalized site plan until a judgment is rendered by the court. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Next we have Keith Ratawa.
Good evening, thanks for having me. My name is Keith Ratawa, I live at 124 Nugent Road in Grafton. I teach law, land use law in particular. And there were a couple of things that were a little confusing to me about the materials I was looking at for tonight. I saw the letter from the applicant's attorney saying SECRE is done, or SECRE is done. But of course, that's not true or accurate as a legal matter. As this commission knows, somebody does SECRE for rezone applications, you do SECRE for site plan review, that's the way it goes. If just because SECRE had been done for rezole meant you didn't have to do it for site plan, then it would say so in SECRE. Why bother, right? Why bother doing SECRE for site plan review? But of course, that's not where we are. SECRE is still on the table, it's still your obligation and power to do that. And, and it also makes sense, right? What we haven't seen is the specific layout of these buildings, though the degree to which the construction of these buildings will make it absolutely unable to review or to get to and understand and, and do some exploration on this cultural resource that is going to be buried under these buildings. This is an environmental impact, but more specifically, it's a Troy-specific cultural impact. I do suggest that something like a racial impact statement might not be a bad idea here. It's becoming very popular among local governments to understand, not just, you know, whether this housing will have an impact on affordable and available housing for people of color, for disadvantaged communities and some such things, but also the cultural resource that's being buried here. SECRE is wide open, and this is exactly what it's for. The idea that I saw in the application materials, that there will be somebody on site to make a decision on whether there are archaeological resources that are going to be significantly impaired from construction, that's nice, and we should do that anyway. But SECRE specifically was adopted to prevent that kind of reason. That's all it's for. Look before you leap. Understand the impacts before the construction happens, right? What they're asking for is an unreviewable decision that they get to make on whether they just go ahead and pave over cultural resource that is significant to the city of Troy. Now's the time to decide the extent of that impact, right? Because if you look at it and you say, golly, we shouldn't be paving over this till we know the extent of the resource, the buildings can be moved, right, somewhere else on the site. This is what site plan review is for. A couple other quick comments.
Just like, you know, you're over two minutes, if you could just.
Okay, I'll wrap this up quick. I mean, I'm sure this is a super nice building or a collection of buildings, but here, it doesn't look like the right place. And now I'm just looking specifically at the planned development standards, right? 10% of the total number of drawings should be single-family detached, if feasible. I don't believe there's ever been a showing that it's not feasible to do that. The building height appropriate to the location. There aren't buildings like this all single-family detached. This is a monstrosity in comparison to the neighborhood. There are provisions about if they're going to be boats stored on site, they have to be covered. I haven't seen anything on that. And they do have a dock and a marina, you know there are going to be boats there. What we're asking for is slow down, right? We're moving too fast here. Slow down, make sure this is the right development for Troy. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next I have Rachel Carter.
Hello, my name is Rachel Carter. I've been a Troy resident for 13 years, and I live at 109 Second Avenue in Troy, adjacent to the land. So I've been coming to meetings about this project for over three years. As I understand it, there have been over 40 hours of public comment against this project in its current form. I've never once heard a resident come up and speak in favor of it. And the concerns about this project have been on archaeological, historical, cultural, social, economic, biological, environmental, and infrastructural ground. Since this project continues to move forward, what I hope for is that this body can acknowledge the public's significant concerns about this project by reducing its footprint. By reducing the number of buildings allowed, we can conserve some of the forest in the midst of a climate crisis. We can protect some of the character of the neighborhood, which this project does not match. And we can save some of the archaeological artifacts that are irreplaceable once a building goes up over them. And I will be honest with you, maybe even blunt. This project looks like a Hampton Inn in any strip mall anywhere in America. And I don't think that it's worth destroying an entire forest that the public is against to put this there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have David Banks.
Good evening. My name is David Banks, I reside at 46 Bell Avenue. I've been a Troy resident for, oh gosh, wow, 13 years now, wow. Okay, so Troy is endowed with a spectacular natural environment that includes magnificent gorges and expansive waterfront, and a wide array of mature, open spaces. The city's historical development is directly tied to its natural environment, and Troy's residents value these assets within their city. In order to protect the natural environment while supporting fiscal sustainability, a range of strategies such as growing the urban forest canopy, improving the health of river ecosystems, introducing green infrastructure, and adapting conservation measures in development projects should be implemented. That's not me, that's not pretty words. That is our own Realized Troy Comprehensive Plan that we adopted years back and that this development runs completely counter to. It is, by my estimation, and I should say, I am a lecturer in the Department of Geography and Planning at University of Albany, where I teach courses on urban planning, development, and neighborhood revitalization, that this is quite literally textbook spot zoning. Textbooks that I teach from describe spot zoning as a, a development that is completely outside of the character of surrounding developments and is put together directly for the purposes of a specific interest. And in this case, it's Vanderburg and his development. This is, there is no conceivable explanation for how this comports with the neighborhood. Not a single person that lives near it has said that they do like it. Ms. Carter, I, I'm going to have to correct briefly. I have heard one or two people approve of this project, and it was the developer's high school drinking buddies. That is literally the only people I have ever heard. Those are literally the only people I have ever heard say anything nice about this project. The fact that this development doesn't even comport to what a planned development district would allow, which is what this was spot zoned into, is further, I think, quite preposterous. The highly unusual move to designate the city council as a lead agency that would then provide a negative declaration was also very strange. The means of arriving at that negative declaration through a highly unusual closed-door process, taking advantage of a technicality, where important information that shouldn't have been made public was revealed in closed-door meetings is highly unusual. This will not help our housing affordability problem. It will likely exacerbate it because the basic math of this development ensures that the apartments will be much more expensive than the prevailing mean rent that we have right now. And as the way that housing prices work, is supply does not always, increasing supply does not always reduce the cost. There's not a simple supply-demand curve. If you provide lots of housing at one price point, it signals to other landlords and developers that they can sell at that price point. It does not just mean like, you know, in the same way that you add eggs into the market, the price of eggs goes down. That's not at all how housing prices work. Finally, as I know this body knows, the increase in interest rates and costs of construction, combined with the expenses of developing this particular site, mean that we can almost certainly expect further value engineering from what is presented here. That means a cheaper, uglier, less sustainable project than what the applicant is showing you today. So even if you find that good, that's not even what you're going to get. I guarantee you. The price of money, loans, and the price of materials, the price of labor is all going up, and what they will save on is building quality.
Over your time.
Yeah, and so that's why I implore you to at least listen to what the Friends of the Maheken Tuck have said. They have been exceptionally reasonable in asking for this project to be smaller, but I encourage you to also listen to what Jeff Bennett had just said and request that you wait to make a decision on this until pending litigation is completed. Thank you.
Next, we have Jacob Friedman. And I'm just going to say, I did see there was a comment on the Zoom asking if people attending via Zoom will be allowed to comment. And yes, we'll get to those after we have gone through all the names of people who are in the room tonight. There's only one other, so we'll be turning to those very shortly.
Hi, my name is Jacob Friedman. I've lived in Troy most of my life. Right now, I live on 9 Putnam Street. I grew up not too far from that at 20 North Lake Ave. So other than the, you know, literal artifacts that these will be built on top of, it's... So when you destroy a forest, you get flooding problems, and Troy already has flooding problems. There are, and like, there's a lot of empty buildings. The house, this will not solve a housing problem. There's just, every time I walk down a street, I see another empty building that is, that could be revived, but we're choosing not to. And then this is the answer to that, which is great. So I had to sign up a bit later because I was just shocked at how ugly this was. Like, I was really shocked. I never saw what this would look like. So I guess if I were to give critique and feedback, so I have an art background. Like, it's not the color, it's not the roof, it's not the balcony. It just doesn't fit with any architecture that exists in Troy. Like, with Revit, AutoCAD, I know you can add other buildings into this diagram. So next time you show this, show the other buildings, and then we can talk about it. It's, it's, it's just way too long, way too expensive. It sticks out like a sore thumb, and nobody wants this. That's, that's all I have to say, really. Yeah, I'm just really upset. All right, thanks.
Thank you. And last person we have signed up to speak in the room is Kana Passanuri. And I'll just let people know, if there's anybody else in the room who still does want to speak, we'll give an opportunity for that, but I am going to turn to people who are signed up via Zoom afterwards.
Well, hello, my name is Kana Passanuri, and I'm also a student at RPI, so I don't have an address right now. But as my classmate said before, we are here due to like the significance, the historical and environmental significance of this piece of land. And to quote-unquote "develop" this land would really be a crime to the indigenous people who have treated this land with respect for the past centuries. I just wanted to finish off with like a quick story about my hometown in Northwest Jersey, which also had a similar conflict to what you guys have here, where a big-time developer wanted to come in and quote-unquote "develop" an age-old untouched piece of land. And similarly, similarly to what we're seeing here, there was an entire community backlash. And I'm glad to say to you guys that they listened to the community. So I hope you guys can do the same to preserve this land for our generation as well as the future generations to come.
Thank you. So if you're on Zoom and you do want to speak, if you wouldn't mind just raising your hand, and then Eric can unmute you one by one.
Hello?
If you want to state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Sarah Bachinger. I'm calling in on behalf of Friends of the Maheken Tuck, and I reside in Round Lake. My statement will be very short. I basically just wanted to echo Keith Hirakawa's statement for the need of SEACRA and the consideration on housing affordability that only became evident as the site plans became available. We submitted a letter today that details how this proposed development will increase the persistent housing affordability crisis while also being adverse to the persistently high vacancy rate in Troy. I won't go into the details of this letter as we have submitted it to the record, but other than that, I, other than stating that, I urge you to carefully review in context and support of Keith Hirakawa's call to conduct a SEACRA for this site plan review. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Morrissey, and I'm the Director of Sustainability at TAP Inc., the Community Design Center of the Capital Region, which has been in Troy, functioning as a nonprofit architecture practice for 54 years. I have been in and around Troy since the age of six in 1992 and became a resident in 2017, and I currently reside at 22 South Lake Ave. This development proposal is entirely inappropriate for this site, as so many have already said. Having been spot zoned, it has and continues to open the city of Troy to legal risk, but that is the tip of the iceberg for risk. Flood risk, loss of rare species habitat, historical erasure, architectural offense, and traffic danger are just a few of the other risks here. Stormwater runoff has been greatly underestimated in this planning application at a location where the ecology defends the northern part of Lansingburg from flood risk. SEACRA must be completed prior to considering this project fully. Otherwise, you are not doing your due diligence as a commission. And from an architectural perspective, this is the definition of pastiche, a style that has no style. In the strongest possible terms, TAP opposes this project and requests that any decision be made after the court decision of Bennett v. City Council of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, is there anybody else looking to speak? Okay, so we're waiting on our next speaker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Elliot. I have lived in Troy for the past nine years. My address is 31 Second Avenue in Troy, on the border of Lansingburg. And I have been coming to meetings that allow public comment for the last two years. And like someone else has said before, like every time I come, there has only been negative public opinion, and there has been negative opinion from all sides, whether that's environmental, architectural, legal, the right of indigenous people, or just like basic protection of land, historical also. So like, this is just a reiteration of that, and we are all quite disappointed as the plan continues to move forward despite all of the negative feedback that you've received. So I came today just would also like to say my piece of being against the further development of this project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carson Oliver. I currently live at 240 11th Street. And yeah, there's a few things I need to say. So first, we need to recognize that this is an ancient forest. Ecosystems like these take thousands of years to develop. That's older than anyone alive today. And at such a crucial time in our climate history, we cannot afford to lose any more old-growth forest. And this will only further worsen our predicament and expedite a loss of biodiversity. But I also wanted to mention that it's not going to help with Troy's recent croiss, crow situation that I'm sure everyone is familiar with. This project is only going to exacerbate that further with the cutting down of all of these trees. And we also need to recognize the sacred indigenous history of this site, going back over 5,000 years. And all of this to be replaced with market-rate developer special copy-paste boxes, which serve as the antithesis to community and environment and to people. And I don't know, I guess a kiosk that is going to dedicate to the history that just got paved over. For many citizens in Troy, market rate is not affordable. It's not even close. So ultimately, who are these apartments for? Because it's clearly not the citizens of Troy. This project will be replacing an indigenous forest, which holds such deep, significant history to so many people with ugly boxes that don't hold importance to anybody. Kevin Vandenberg and his buddies are absolutely giddy to decimate an ancient sacred site of such rich indigenous and ecological history with human storage facilities. That's what these are, designed to last less than 50 years. Are we really going to allow this to happen? To continue to let rich, greedy land developers line their pockets at the expense of the communities and the ecologies and the histories of their sites? I mean, Shattuck has already seen how terrible this project is, and they've refused to issue permits for their portion of the site. And just to reiterate the things that the Friends of the Maheken Tuck have outlined in their letter submitted to the city council, those proposals are not drastic, very far from drastic. They are so incredibly doable. So let's make some changes. Ideally, let's not develop this land at all. No one wants it to be developed. Yeah, it's not about buffer zones. It's not about border planting. It's not about facades. It's not about the type of railing that we're seeing on the exterior of this box. It's about preserving the existing ecology that has taken thousands of years to develop and the ancient archaeological sites that are older than this town, this county, and this country. That's, that's what we're fighting to preserve. And so I just wanted to ask, are we going to be doing what's best for Troy and its people, its history, and its ecology? Or what's best for business? Thank you.
You see people here? It might be that kind of wild style, or isn't there?
Elliot's already had a chance to speak.
Great, thanks.
If you want to give Elliot another chance to speak, she's raised her hand again.
I think she spoke for less than two minutes. So Elliot, I understand you wanted to speak again. If you can just keep it brief, since you did already have one opportunity.
Yeah, I understand. Thanks for letting me speak again. I just thought of something else. Since I've been coming to these for the last couple of years, and it has all been negative public comment, it's really frustrating to me also that it seems like our voices aren't being heard and that you are not doing, at least, at the very least, a due diligence of listening to us. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. I think there's nothing else on Zoom to speak. I think there's still wanted to have an opportunity to speak. Public hearing is open at the moment. All right, seeing nobody else, I think I will move on to commissioner comments. So
I want to give the applicant an opportunity to address some of those comments directly. I think that would be helpful.
Sure, that's fine. If the applicant would like to say anything in response.
I mean, if you guys are okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief as I can and just hit some of the big ones. Ms. Bennett is correct. She did sue not once, but twice. However, she lost both lawsuits against the city council and the zoning board of appeals. The litigation has been concluded. Among the things raised in litigation are things that have been raised tonight. Some of those include spot zoning.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, you can't speak at the mic.
Some, all right. So some of those things that were raised in the litigation included things that were raised tonight, including spot zoning, which the court found was not true. I'm not going to, I'm going to provide our position on some things. Obviously, you have Rick to provide you legal advice. So obviously, feel free to consult him afterwards. Mr. Hirakawa described essentially what is called illegal segmentation under SEACRA. What he described is take a application and only review the parts that are in front of you. That is the complete opposite of what SEACRA calls for. As I'm sure this commission knows, they've done it many times. You are supposed to have a lead agency that reviews the entirety of the project. The planning commission did so for many months. Many, many, many hours of public meeting and public comments that I believe someone here tonight noted it to be somewhere around 40 hours. It honestly might have been. So the notion that was raised that there was some kind of backdoor closed meetings was actually factually inaccurate. The dozens of meetings that have been held, including community meetings in which the developer invited the neighbors, listened to them, took what they had to say, and made changes to the site, including the location of the buildings. The location of the buildings have been placed in the middle of the site specifically for those neighbors and at a request from the city council. The idea of putting the buildings in those places was to minimize the impacts of visual, not just from the river, so they weren't on the river, but also from those who live on Second Avenue. There's a comment that Skataco refused to issue permits. I'm not sure where that come from. There is no part of this project that is within the town of Skataco. There is a small portion of the site that is within the town, but there's no development that occurs within town. So there's, there's no permits or approvals from the town necessary. There was a comment, we wouldn't build what was approved. Frankly, I'm not sure how we would get away with that. Rick had drafted a very detailed zoning ordinance that requires us to comply with a number of things. And any development that this council or this commission approves, we would have to comply with, whether it's this building or the changes that you all asked for the aesthetics. So I'm not sure how we would accomplish that. It's essentially not possible. The environmental concerns that were raised, I'm not really going to get into most of them to say that SEACRA was completed. SEACRA was challenged. The lawsuit was lost. There are no rare plants or animals on the site. And all the impacts have been studied and addressed. Uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions for us.
Ms. Bennet's lawsuits, is there an appeal pending?
Um, simply a notice of appeal has been filed. However, the appeal has not been perfected.
Understood, but she has a time period within which she could perfect that appeal. The appellate division could review it and come back with a decision.
Correct, however.
Fact is stage one.
The pending decision could take years to come and there's no basis to deny us a decision on our application based on a pending lawsuit. So it.
Well, it would seem to be, it would seem that if the appellate division finds that SEACR wasn't compliant with, or that this project in some way is deficient, that if you move forward with it, it makes it hard to remedy that, does it not?
I don't, I'm not.
You don't understand, if two years or three years pass and you have these buildings in place and the appellate division says, sorry, the process was flawed for these reasons, you can't do it. We're stuck with your buildings.
There is a, a remedy to Ms. Bennett to seek during that litigation if she wanted to prevent that and she did not. Um, the other side of that alternative is, I'm not going to provide legal advice in this public forum, but I will just say that that remedy has not been complied with. The flip side of that coin is that in three years, if the third department comes back and says everything was done just fine, my client has been denied his rights, his constitutional property rights to develop his land for three years.
I didn't find that funny. I understand what you're saying. It is his property. He does have rights. He does have rights to develop it. These folks have rights to express their concerns about the development. The concerns are, uh, I think it's interesting that folks have said that they, no one's listened to them. I have been reading them nonstop. They cause me concern and construction causes me concern, the, the look of it causes me concern. But I understand your client has, has rights to develop their property. That's the nature of law, law in the, in this country, so.
I mean, I also don't agree that no one has listened. Um, I, as was mentioned prior, there's been dozens of hours of comments. Um, there's been changes to the project. Ms. Bennett was afforded a seat at the table quite literally when SEACR was reviewed by the city council. So, uh, there's just some inaccuracies in what's been described.
Well, I, I'm sure that after all this time that, that, you know, folks have said things and things have changed, but I whether there are inaccuracies or there's just a, uh, a, a view of, um, the, the way things have evolved, I think everyone here is speaking in good faith about what they're concerned about. And it's pretty self evident and I don't attribute any bad faith to the developer or to you. I, so, so I think that it's good to have a clear record. It's good to understand. I'm going to ask, uh, at some point in time, uh, council to advise us on whether SEACR is on the table, as we heard from one of the presenters. And as you think is not, and if it is, I'd like to know what council's position. You know, I feel like we're coming into this, talking too much. You can rein me in. If my two minutes expire, just rein me right in. But I, 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 I look at this and feel like we're here and we're listening to these folks speak from their heart. And our wings have been clipped. I, I, I don't know what we can do given this, the city ordinance, the, the, uh, approval of the conceptual design and all the rest of it. So if, if SEACR's on the table, I'd like to know that. So anyway, that's, that, that's more than comments to you.
That would have been my question as well. Cause this is the first project that I went on, since I've been on the board, that we have not been lead agency on. So I'm just wondering, you know, what, what power do we actually have?
I, I mean, in, in one of your earlier submissions, what you advised us is that we can take notice that the city council has issued a negative declaration. But that, that leaves the question, uh, that was expressed tonight over whether SEACR can be bifurcated for zoning purposes and for planning purposes. I'd like to know that, is it possible?
The, the negative declaration in the SEACR record covered the entirety of the project. It covered not just the rezoning, it covered this site plan application and approval, and it covered the zoning board of appeals variances.
So the speaker tonight was in, interpreted that incorrectly?
I cannot, I cannot speak to his misinterpretation.
You don't have to. I'll say that. You don't have.
Any other attendees on Zoom if you wouldn't mind reading yourselves?
Ben, are you about to speak?
I, I thought Rick was going to speak. Obviously, it's hard to hear what he was gonna say.
Speakers, I heard them say that at some point they made director question to me, but no one did.
No, well, I didn't know.
Very loyally answered, Rick.
Yeah, I, I suppose that the question is, is there validity to the notion that SEACR is still on the table?
Yes, the project is currently conceived. SEACR has already been resolved. Uh, the council could, uh, one of the principal objections or an early objection to the SEACR process before the city council was that consideration was being segmented, which it was not. The, um, council considered the project as a whole. As far as I know, there have been no material changes to the project. There, and the SEACR determination was litigated in the Supreme Court and decided against the petitioner, Ms. Bennett. And so, uh, the SEACR is done as far as I can say legally.
I appreciate that. So, so, uh, the, the speaker's effort to bifurcate it into two separate considerations and doesn't carry water. We, we are, we are here and can notice that SEACR declaration was done by the city council and it's negative and that's where we stand.
Yeah, I think you must take notice of that. The city council was lead agency. Um, you were on notice of that and, uh, their determination is binding.
What, what can I pursue more of this legal guidance would be helpful. What is our thought? What role do we have here other than approving the color palette in the, and the roofline of these buildings? Do we have a substantive role?
Um, I think you actually do. I mean, uh, your role is want to make sure that the plans uh, conform to the ordinance, uh, though the ordinance is, is, uh, pretty detailed. Um, to, uh, you know, contrary to, uh, the applicant, uh, you are entitled to, to ensure, to look at the, um, plans and make sure that they conform to the SEACR. Um, which is part of the ordinance. Um, and also you, you, you do your normal site plan review or approval or, or, or disapprove of it as you choose. You're not without power here. It's just that other parts of the process have already been done.
I, I think that's helpful. Thank you. And, don't stop. No, I, I'll take any guidance you'll give us. I, 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 I am struggling with this and and even though I've been here now for, I don't know, three quarters of a year or a year and I'm old and it's all merging into one. I, 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 I don't totally understand the, um, the dynamic of this particular um, uh, application, given its history and how it's wound its way through the city council and how there's been all of this review and forty hours of commentary from folks all in opposition except for two friends. I, I don't, I just wanna, I'm just hearing all of this and saying, what, what is, what can I do properly? And I heard some of those things, regular site plan review. And if there's any limitations, let me know that too.
I was just going to make the point, as far as the litigations are concerned, uh, those were, both petitions were dismissed. Um, the petitions were petitions raised all the issues that you heard tonight and all the issues that were raised before the city council. I haven't heard a new issue tonight. Um, the, uh, Judge Jordan issued two lengthy, thorough and comprehensive decisions. They are on appeal. As far as I know, appeals have not been perfected. Uh, whether they will be or not, I don't know, but there's been no interim relief that was ever requested. Uh, and therefore I think, you know, you have to consider the applicant's application.
Was, was there a question as to how we ended up in front of the city council for SEACR? Was that part of your?
No, but I wouldn't mind you addressing it.
Well, it was just there was a, a question as to who would be lead agency. Um, and my recollection is there was an original submission to the, the planning commission um, who didn't take up the action and it was brought to the city council who then assumed lead agency over no objection to any other interested or involved agencies.
Well, just, just for clarity, you know, there's a little more context to that and how we got into this unique situation where we're not lead agency and we have this ordinance that, you know, basically confines the project to these specific parameters. Cause that's not, not the case for many of our, most, most of our other projects. I don't think I've, I've ever seen another one like this. Um, and the project was in front of the planning commission to have, um, a recommendation. There was an ask for a recommendation from the planning commission. I just want to point out, and, and, you know, this is for our, our commission and, and also for members of the public, you know, I, I heard that comment about how we're not listening and I, I also had an issue with that. Um, in that the planning commission did, did vote to, to recommend to not
Rezone.
Is it choice between single family houses or this?
Well, well, it was presented as that, but I feel like that, I don't know if that's necessarily accurate on, on what the choices were because, um, it was, it was about the rezoning and whether or not we would recommend the rezoning. And the single family housing concept was, was just a concept that was, um, you know, basically showing what is allowed there. It wasn't a formal application. It wasn't being discussed, um, in a real matter. It was, the way that I had heard it was, well, if you don't approve this, uh, the planned development, then we're gonna, we're, we will apply to, to, to tear everything down and build these single family homes. Um, and I felt like that was very, a very strategic, um, way of, of putting it. Um, but it, it did, um, you know, put us in a unique, unique, uh, situation where um, we, we saw a glimpse of the project related to the rezoning and then recommended that it was not rezoned or not, not, not given a planned development, excuse me. And then, um, the city council, you know, basically ignored our recommendation. Um, and then now we're, now we're tasked with this project within, within these specific parameters. So that, you know, for, for the public's sake and for, for Bill's sake, I think that's, that's important to just recap. Um, and for all of us to just remember that, that, that's how we got where we are. Uh, one, one question, you know, you've mentioned there's, it's been determined that there's no, um, delicate or, or rare planned animal life on site. How did you arrive at that?
So there's two, three separate things. Brian's gonna address the third one. Um, you have the state list, which lists what is present. Um, then you have the federal list, which lists what is present. And then Brian, I think is gonna tell you about the site walk.
Yeah, so, um, Brian O'Shawne, engineer, uh, for the applicant, there was, um, there's no threatening or, and or endangered species on the site. Um, there's, there's nothing when you do the IPAC search. There's nothing when you do the D C environmental mapper. Um, there was discussion way back when about bats. There might be bats on the site. They're not, it's not a listed northern long-eared bat area. Um, there's no hibernaculum that's known within this area for that. So, um, as far as, I didn't say there's no species on the site. There's just no threatening or endangered species on the site.
And this, this IPAC search, can you just go into a little more detail?
IPAC is just a, it's, yeah, it's just a database search for US fish and wildlife service. So there's federal and state.
Similar to the, to the EAF mapper though on GIS?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's US fish and wildlife. So like, for example, the northern long-eared bat would come up within the IPAC, uh, area for that if it's done. Um, but again, it, it didn't.
But, and, and somebody mentioned something about a walk?
Yeah, the site's in reverse.
By who?
Wetland scientists that have biological backgrounds. Wow, there was nothing observed.
Okay, but there wasn't like a, so was it, would you say it was an ecological survey or was there a report that was, no? Cause I've used the EAF mapper a lot and you know, you just click a, click a button and then the G S parcel data tells you whether or not that animal or species is there and it's very vague for, uh, uh, the size of the project, you know, you know, if you're, if you're.
Actually used on every project every day.
Excuse me?
That's used on every project every day.
I'm aware. Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I, like I said, I've, I've used it plenty and, um, you know, thinking about that and how it's appropriate for small sites that have development history. Um, I think that there are unique characteristics to this site.
Such as?
The size of the site is unique and the fact that it's not been, that, that it's currently wooded. Um, you know, we don't have, do you, are you, are you implying that the site has been developed in the past?
No, I'm asking what the unique characteristics are of it from an ecological standpoint.
Right, and I think in, in the realm of projects that we see as a planning commission in Troy, we do not see projects that have, or on sites that have never been developed before. We do not often see projects of this scale. And it's been a continuous concern about the amount of ecological impact that's being made here. And it, you know, it seems, it would seem appropriate to me that there would be some sort of more in-depth report given to us rather than a simple checking the box on the EAF mapper.
You, you have no listed species. Yeah, I mean, there's nothing protected on that site. There's no, nothing protected in the area.
That's, I mean, that's great to hear from you.
No, 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 that's, that's from the state and federal databases. It's not from us.
Based on clicking a box, a, a parcel on a map on, on GIS.
So it's based on state database, but I will also say in part that Ms. Bennet's organization did submit what they would refer to as a detailed, um, ecological survey of the site. And that survey of itself, although it was represented much differently in front of planning committee, in front of the city council, concluded that there were no federally or state listed species in the site.
Sure. Okay, that's great. I am not trying to imply that there are federally or state protected species on the site, but I would wonder if there are things that would be worth protecting voluntarily on the site, things that might be rare in our region, things that are valuable to the community, things that we would like to see avoided, whether that's in the location of the buildings, which I know is the scariest thing for the developers, or whether it's just something that you avoid during construction. All, you know, we constantly see development plans approved, there could be a significant mature tree on the site that does not need to be impacted, but is often impacted by construction care because there's not care given to that site. Is this a scenario that you can imagine?
I mean, we've identified areas that will and will not be cleared.
Right. Have you identified vehicle pathways or areas that would be disturbed during construction?
Yeah, there's a clearing.
Is there a construction plan that shows areas that will not be touched during vehicle, vehicles moving throughout the site, things like that? If there is a three hundred year old oak tree on the site that is not rare, but is valuable, is that something that we could have a understanding of its existence and avoid during construction?
You can see when you walk the site, that there's not a three hundred year old tree. We'll, we'll show you when we do this.
Great. Thank you.
So someone mentioned that environmentally, the, uh, site protects the lower part of Troy, uh, from erosion and water and flooding. Has that been studied and, uh, what is, what is the impact of that? Because you're going to have to grade the land in some degree in order to build this. So have you done anything in that?
So, at, there, there was a comment made about the, the river and the shoreline and as you've seen on the plans that we've provided, you know, we're leaving that buffer area alone with the exception of a kayak launch, which is going to be crushed down. As it relates to stormwater, this site disturbs greater than one acre. It's going to require coverage under. this site disturbs greater than one acre. It's going to require coverage under the D E C's state pollutant discharge elimination system, general permit for construction activities associated with, I'm sorry, for stormwater discharges associated with construction activities. The general permit. We've done all the stormwater modeling for the site. The site is required to have post discharge less than or equal to pre discharge. We have to take water quantity and water quality into account as part of that to meet the general permit requirements, and that has all been submitted.
So I'd like to maybe move on slightly a bit to a slightly more recent history. You know, the friends of me who can talk submitted a letter the last time we gathered that was a pretty detailed sort of recommendations and concerns. I just wanted to know if you guys had a chance to look at that and if you had maybe some point by point kind of.
Yeah, so our next, we're still working on addressing the other site plan comments that the board had. We couldn't get the site plan updated in time for the submission date. So as part of our next submission, there'll be a point by point response to that staff's comment.
Excellent. Thank you.
That kind of speaks to what I was going to say next, which is we heard numerous public comments tonight. I think the one theme that I heard repeatedly was about minimizing the footprint of the development on the site. And that's something that echoes concerns that this board has raised, particularly in terms of the parking. So understanding that you you are going to be submitting a revised site plan. I'm happy to wait for you to address that until we actually have that in front of us. Sounds like it'll probably be next month. I just wanted to point that out, but as a concern that I've heard from the public, it sounds like numerous people have that concern. I have that concern. It sounds like other members of the commission have that concern. So I just wanted to flag that as seemingly an issue that could address at least some of people's concerns about this project is seeing what can be done to minimize the footprint.
So I was looking through the materials and I didn't see where Shippo chimed in because it would seem that they would not be in favor of this.
So Shippo is currently reviewing, oh, sorry, Shippo is currently reviewing the data recovery plan. That's the item we talked about last time where our archaeological consultant will go through and do an inventory prior to construction.
Okay, so the idea is to, when you're digging up, if you find an arrowhead, you'll stick it in the box?
No, it'll be done beforehand.
Okay, and I know the applicant specifically was looking for feedback on the current design. Members of that commission would like to provide their feedback on that, just so the applicant does have something to review before they come back in the future.
Well, I really want to see the other buildings because I mean, yeah, this is, this looks like the length of Harmony Mills here. I read how the other buildings that are sort of C shaped fit into this, I really can't comment on on that without seeing those.
Well, the idea was to make like a representative sample and see what you thought about colors. As Derek mentioned earlier, changing some of those cables and things like that, if that's the direction that the commission is looking for or not.
Well, yeah, it looks better than it did last time, but in context, you can't, you can't really judge until you see them together.
I think personally, aesthetics are not really my, you know, point of emphasis in general. But I kind of take Suzanne's point here that certainly I can react to this, but it's sort of without the kind of the whole piece. And I totally understand where the thinking was, but it's sort of a it's a little harder to understand like the weight of the entire site. You know, as it is, I, it's not my favorite, but that's just my personal preferences, you know.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Suzanne. I mean, it's, I think the design's an improvement over what we looked at last month. Still not something that I'm terribly fond of, but, you know, the colors at least to be an improvement. And I would like to see it in context with the entire development to really get a sense of how it looks, you know.
And the massing.
Exactly, the mass in particular. Bill, did you want to add something?
No, no, I don't, I don't know that I really have an opinion between this one and the last one. I think, I think, I can't say this is an improvement, but I don't think it's any worse, so. I, I, I think, I think that they both look the same and it's the primary question in my mind is how does this fit into the texture of the whole neighborhood? It's, it's, it's much different. Let's start with that.
I will say we're at a bit of a disadvantage since we're blacking our architect and our engineer who's totally misunderstanding.
It's mostly what do we like?
Right, design and materials, yeah.
Yeah, I think Sarah and Roddy have a way of defining those things a little bit more or putting those things into words as ideas, but I agree with Anthony's points, I think. It's, I'm not terribly fond of it and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing it improve and in the context of the other buildings, the rest of the site.
So we did get finally word back that it looks like we'll be able to go forward with the site visit that we've been discussing last month. So I think we're going to try to get that organized between now and the next commission meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anyone else, anybody else out of the final comments. But I think in light of that and the fact that it's kind of to submit some additional materials. Would you like to be on the October agenda? Okay, so we can adjourn this to that date. I see a hand from the audience. What I would say is if you have anything additional to add, you can submit it as a written comment, which is still can be admitted as part of the record. Well, we consider all written comments from members of the public.
We all really do read them.
Yes.
Genuinely.
So feel free to submit those comments and they'll be reviewed with all other public comments. Did you have anything to add, Bill?
No, I'm.
All right. So with that said, unless the applicant has anything else. So we'll adjourn this application to the October, you know, the date offhand, or?
Yes.
October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. I'm going to leave a public comment open at this time, just in case with the changes. There are any additional members of the public or people who couldn't make it tonight, if you want to comment. You know, we always do not encourage people to make repetitive comments, so people are just going to say the same thing. We encourage them to yield their time to people, members of the public, if there's something new to add. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Not gonna be me. Maybe they'll bring their own. I can assure you. I have an interview. There are no.
No deliberative discussions.
Yes.
You have our word.
Welcome back, Andy.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next item on our agenda, we have Q L P C twenty twenty-three, twenty-one. This is one twenty-four, Fourth Street. Do we have the applicant present? Hi, hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thank you for waiting. Hey, feel free to start with any changes you'd like us to. It's specific.
So last, last meeting, we were still waiting on approval for H R C. That still hasn't been resolved. Currently going through with a consultant to kind of go over a request from well, a suggestion from H R C and Shippo to possibly move my egress. But with the current changes, minimal changes to the storefront that I'm planning, consultant feels pretty strongly that it's within, it's like outside the reach of Shippo to change something that is already now pre-existing to the ship on the land. So just working through a couple more final details along mainly along the windows, just to confirm that just to confirm that everything, you know, falls in line with what like Shippo would be looking for. But yeah. Other than that, that's kind of where I think that.
Hey, any commissioner comments?
There was mention of a, of a photo that was found.
It was a photo from nineteen ninety-four. Prior to when the storefront was changed in ninety-eight. It was for a retail store, I believe. Wally mentioned it might have been a hat store or something along those lines. A completely different concept on, you know, what it became after ninety-eight, which I think it is continued to operate as a bar restaurant, kind of hospitality, but just since.
Would you be able to send that to Eric so he can share it with us?
The picture from ninety-four?
Yeah, yeah.
I think. I may be able to generate it here.
And is your, you, you mentioned the the process you're going through with H R C and Shippo. Is your intention to meet their, their requests?
Yeah, my goal is to apply for Shippo and pretty much go along with what they are suggesting.
Great.
I think that's really admirable. Thank you.
Thankfully for me, the interior doesn't really have much in terms of historic anything to really salvage there. So the more alongs, again, the storefront and the windows, the storefront, the facade that will be the main focus for for Shippo. So, yeah.
So does that give you, do you have a, a clear timeline for yourself or?
With the Shippo, to be realistic, I'm probably looking at about six to eight months for the completion of the construction. Shippo.
Mike, you would like to speak a little louder?
Sorry, six to eight months is what I would be anticipating.
So is your intention to come back to us after that or what were you thinking?
Sorry.
Was your intention to to come back after that or what's, what's your?
I was hoping to get conditional approval pending H R C's, okay.
So just, just so the commission knows, seeker notices came back and there were no objections to the planning commission declaring itself lead agency.
No rare animals or?
None were found on site.
I think we talked about this a lot last time. Oh, thanks. And I've worked a lot with H R C and I know how thorough they can be, but I also just want to point out that they're an advisory board to the planning commission and I think their advice is certainly valuable, but I think we should still have a, we would, we should, I would recommend us having a subcommittee review. Like when they have their final recommendation that we review it and then we approve the project just because they're not an authoritative board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we certainly had other projects where we were waiting on H R C recommendations and we have, you know, certainly taken those into account with our approvals and sometimes disregarded their recommendations as they are advisory. So.
I'm not implying that.
Right, no, no, I know, I'm just saying. We're familiar with the process, at least as far as that's concerned, so. As far as tonight's, well, you didn't push your comments, but we can certainly, I think, keep the environmental review process if everybody feels like we have enough information, although I guess there's the question of if there are recommendations H R C outstanding.
Yeah. Could I, could I just point out that under the new code, on their specific language that seeks to address the relationship and coordination between you and the historic review commission? And what it states is that the planning commission shall seek a recommendation from the historic district and landmarks review commission advisory committee regarding any alteration, construction or demolition activity proposed in the locally designated historic districts. My read of that language is you have an obligation to seek their input. So I don't think you have the ability or I don't think it would be in keeping with the intent of that section to approve something conditioned upon their input. It seems to presuppose that their input to you is something that you receive before you make a final decision. That said, I think you can act on secret tonight, but.
Right. I just want to say that we, we did also get their recommendation already, though, that they, that the storefront is altered to, to represent what was there previously. So we, we do have their recommendation, right?
Then what are you waiting on from them?
I'm waiting on next media, next month to meet with them to confirm. They were, they were just waiting on whether the consultant honestly had a strong opinion whether the storefront would be able to be moved or not. Since it was the opposite of, like, since she had a strong feeling that it didn't need to be removed, they were very much okay with my current proposed storefront idea. They were just wanted to make sure that, you know, really more from my end that I would be complying with Shippo to get the tax credits. So they were okay with my proposals. But they were more worried for me for the tax credit that I wouldn't I would get pushed back from Shippo. As Shippo, they mentioned, tends to be a little bit stricter than H R C.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, then you're on H R C's agenda for next month. And basically they had recommended that you move your egress, but after speaking with your consultant, you're going back to Shippo to basically see that that, or I'm sorry, to H R C, that that is.
They were, they were okay with my initial proposed storefront color plan, everything. But once Shippo, I mentioned that Shippo was going to be taking a look. They mentioned that they may push for the storefront to be moved to the middle. And that's why they wanted me to talk with the consultant, walk through the space, have her look at the construction, what was there previous and get a strong recommendation from her. She was pretty, she felt pretty comfortable that the storefront wouldn't have to be removed, especially considering I'm just looking to replace the glass, the door and we do the molding, the front paneling. So, yeah.
So Andy, does that, does your earlier comments still stand in that you think we should wait?
I, I think based upon that section, it presupposes that you have a final determination and recommendation from the historic commission and it sounds like there may be some open issues. I also think you may want to adopt that progress and position as a policy because you are a decision-making body, whereas they are not. So I can envision a situation where it becomes quite complicated, where if you approve something conditioned upon their approval and then there was a question on what they approved or whether or not it complies with what they approved. They're just a recommendation body, but you're as a decision-making body, you, you have an approval in place. So I think it's just as a matter of policy, wait till you get a final recommendation from them.
Right.
I don't mean to hold up projects. You can still put it through the secret process, tell them any concerns you have tonight, but I think you want their final recommendation in front of you.
Yeah, so in light of Andy's comments, I think you understand, you know, we're in a position where we don't feel comfortable necessarily approving the project tonight, but I think we can take action on Seeker. Is it all right with you then if you're on next month's agenda, assuming that?
I have a question. If H R C says okay the week before, do I have to come and sit through another?
Yeah, you'll be on the old business part of the agenda, so we can try to bump you.
Can we put it? Last month was equally as painful for that.
We could put it on consent.
You could absolutely put on consent.
Yeah, sure. I think if, yeah, if that's the situation. I, yeah, yeah, consent would mean you're at the head of the agenda before everything else. And, you know, unless there's any serious issue, which we wouldn't anticipate, we would just vote on them as a group.
So the main, main is really H R C's okay. Yeah, it seems to be the only thing that really is holding us back. So if they do get the okay. And, yeah.
I would just advise whatever they send you in terms of their approvals, just, you know, send, send over to me. And then that way I can provide the commissioners complete packet so that they can put it on consent kind of.
And to answer the question I think you were asking, I had suggested to the board to put it over for a month, but also articulated any concerns they have about the project. And no one articulated anything. So I think we're literally just waiting for the historic.
Yeah, cool. Yeah.
All right. And just to be clear, we're, the, the staff comments about like adding lighting into the, the plans, you're planning on addressing that?
The, I, I plan on keeping the remaining, the current lighting and the egress the same. Just making sure that it's operable, repairing it, but the locations and the. Uh, just making sure that it's operable, repairing it, um, but the locations and the conduit and all that that's currently being run, I do not.
Thank you.
Eric, does that address your, your comment or is that, were you suggesting that it went further than that?
Which the lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, if, if you want, I mean, we're talking about like lumens and, and whatnot. So if he's gonna just use what's pre-existing, then but there's really no need for more detail.
Thanks. Steven, have any other concerns?
None at all.
Like a motion to turn this a negative declaration or make a negative declaration second?
Right, so we have a motion. Uh, all those in favor? Bill?
Me too.
James?
Yes.
Suzanne? Stephen?
I, I vote yes as well. Motion carries.
You have a negative declaration, uh, for seeker. Can't take an action on the site plan right now since we are waiting for a final comment from HRC.
To be, we did open the public, uh.
I think we did last time, didn't we? It was at the end of that long meeting, we did. We didn't, we closed it.
Yep. Okay, great, cool, great. Um, I'll make a motion to table. So we hear back from HRC.
Second.
On the agenda for next one.
All right, all those in favor? All right, thanks so much.
Hopefully, I don't see you next one.
Table to the consent agenda specifically.
Consent agenda, yes.
To the consent agenda.
All right.
Okay. Next we have BLPC twenty twenty-one seventy-six. That's fourteen seventy-six Fifth Avenue.
Howdy.
Hey.
How's it going? Uh, my name is Adam Love. I'm from Yesville. Um, we are a family operation. We've been operating in Troy where we started, um, since twenty seventeen. We recently finished a pretty long process of rehabbing and revitalizing a building, um, fourteen sixty-seven fifth. It used to be North End Iron Works. I'm seeing here that we were originally here in twenty twenty-one. It was a pretty long process. Um, it went well, although it took a lot longer than expected. And over the course of that period, you know, we've been evolving and developing and coming up with other ideas and plans and things we'd like to do in the space. Um, so that's really what I'm here for today is to kind of clarify seating, which came up because we would like to have outdoor seating that honestly, I didn't realize since we're going to have it in our lot, that it was something that we originally needed to put on our plan. So we added that on to our plan for this time. Um, to give you a little bit of a sense of that, uh, we have, it's an, it's a, um, it's a very sort of different type of property than anything near it in that area. Uh, we've got a cinder block building. It's a very like industrial stu- uh, style building. It was built to be in iron works. Uh, and then a lot that's actually bigger than the building itself. Um, when we're not open to the public, which we haven't actually yet opened to the public, um, we park our own vehicles in that lot, uh, meaning those of us that work, people on the team. Um, our plan for when we do open to the public and when the weather is good enough to have people sitting outside is to close the gates on the, uh, fence and then have the seating out there. So there won't be any cars coming and going at all. It makes it, um, it's a lot safer for families. I myself have a three-year-old who was born here in Troy. I love being able to disclose the gates. Know that kids can run around and it's safe and there's nice seating and it's comfortable for people. Um, so that's one part of what I'm here to describe to you today. The other thing is that we would like to, uh, expand the number of things that we make in the space. Uh, as of right now, we primarily make kombucha, which is a non-alcoholic fermented beverage. We would like to also start making cider and mead and different fruit wines in the space. There isn't anything in the new or old zoning ordinance that describes uh, cider or wine making in any way, shape or form. Thankfully, there's a search, uh, feature on PDFs that I didn't have to read the whole thing, but those words definitely aren't mentioned at all. There is something about brewing and distilling, uh, which are extremely different processes. Um, and I think it would be helpful for me just to briefly explain the difference so that y'all understand why. In my opinion, it's not similar enough to, um, have the same requirements as brewing or distilling, uh, distilling. First of all, distillation involves making very high-proof alcohol that is flammable. So that's its own sort of whole category of things and it's, it brings, it brings its own hazards. Making beer typically involves, uh, an open flame because you have to make a very strong grain soup essentially to ferment. And that typically involves a lot of heat, a lot of flame, a lot of steam that understandably, uh, understandably brings, um, so this is the before, not the after photo here. Understandably has, uh, additional hazards will have additional fire, uh, safety regulations. Cider or wine or meat making, you're simply taking, be it cider, the juice of apples, um, honey and water can get combined to make meat or with a wine you would press grapes and then you ferment the juice. There's no heat needed. There's no open flame needed. As of right now, we have zero flames in our facility for anything. Um, we heat up water for kombucha, but it doesn't need to boil and we use a glorified electric tea kettle to do it. Um, so it's a very safe, low-impact process. Uh, infrastructurally, nothing needs to change about our space to make cider. We can, that's part of the appeal to us for making cider and fruit wines and mead is that we don't have to invest in any additional equipment or, um, install any other mechanical or electrical systems. We would use the same tanks we use for kombucha. Um, put the juice in them, let them ferment, use the same canning and bottling equipment that we already have for kombucha to package it. I will note that here on the agenda, it says that we're seeking to package and sell. Um, on our application, it specifically says that we're seeking to produce, package and sell. There was some question about whether, whether that was a given from our first application. So I wanted to be very clear this time, we will be producing, packaging and selling. And uh, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. Anybody has any, anything that they'd like to, I don't want to be too long-winded because we've all been here for a while, but I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Uh, I just want to point out that, uh, a nonprofit organization I do work for received an in-kind donation from Yesville Kombucha, um, recently. And I know, I don't think it impacts my, uh, ability to objectively review this case, but just want to point it out for the board.
A- a- as long as it wouldn't impact your decision-making, you can be objective. It's quite, it's very important that you disclose it and I appreciate that you did. Do you need to have a liquor license?
Yeah, so we would have to, um, this is the beginning of a long process. So, uh, in the same way that if you were to approve someone to have a restaurant in Troy, they can't go and start cooking food and selling it. They would have to go to, in the case of a restaurant, the rent solier department itself. In the case of, um, what we already make, we are actually licensed by the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets because we wholesale sell to other businesses. In order to produce cider or fruit wines or anything like that, we would have to both get approval and licenses from the New York State Liquor Authority and the TTV, which is the federal, uh, body that regulates all alcohol producers of all kinds. That, from what I've heard, is like currently a two to eight-month process and more on the six to eight months. But, um, yeah, we have to, I mean, I think each of those applications is like fifty, sixty pages long. Um, it's a big process. They have their own, quite stringent, and rightly so, uh, requirements for how the space is set up. One of their main concerns is whether there's also any, um, inhabitants in the same structure, if there's apartments in the same structure, which we don't have in ours. It's a one-story industrial space, but they've got a long laundry list of things that they, um, want to see. And we're going to be working with somebody who specializes in that process, uh, an attorney that does liquor law to help us through that process and make sure we're compliant before we even submit the applications at all.
Do you have to have our approval before you can address it?
They don't need, they don't need your approval, but it's such a long, intense process that it didn't make any sense to me to start it without first knowing that we had the approval and blessings of our municipality. But from their perspective, they care that we have a CO and that they have some like structural, they want to know that you're not a hundred feet from a church or a school to not, things like that that they, that they outline.
And I, I'm not that familiar with SLA permitting, but my understanding is having outdoor areas that are, where people will be able to consume, that's part of the SLA application. It's all disclosed on there.
Yeah, they actually want an extremely detailed interior and exterior site plan of where the public are, how finished product is stored, where it's stored. And, I mean, Rareform is right around the corner, a couple of corners around and, uh, they have outdoor seating um, in their, in the lot that's on their property. Um, Browns does on their patio. So it's, it's allowed, but they still, they're going to have, you know, their, their main thing is wanting to know that the public can access the area where you're storing finished goods, which is also in our best interest. We don't want anybody walking around where we're making stuff. But oddly, the only cidery in the whole capital region is Ninepin right now, which is kind of weird because New York State has a lot of great cider and wine producers. They're just mostly concentrated farther down or over. So we're excited to bring something a little bit different to the area as we to continue to bring something different to the area. That's kind of what we've been doing since we started here.
So if I can just ask a clarifying question, I do see that you submitted a site plan as part of your materials, but is there anything really different here than what's currently in place? Cause I assume that the parking lot is, there's not many really substantial changes.
There's not, we, one of the things that we included, I forgot to mention on the new site plan, is that we'd like to put in, which there were before in this, on this property, there was a, like a shipping container that was used for outside storage. Um, we'd like to do that ourselves. It'll only be for storage of, um, like empty cans and bottles, things that don't need to be temperature-controlled in any way, but that kind of take up a lot of space. A pallet of empty cans is pretty bulky, although light thing. So we would like to put those out there. Um, that's pretty much, I mean, there were some other things like the new site plan shows the seating because the old one didn't show any seating outside.
Right.
Um, but that's pretty, oh, and then we, we created a lot of green space. There was no green space. I mean, there was and there wasn't. It was a gravel, sort of gravelly pit. And there was actually a lot of greenery throwing in it, which we got a little bit, you know, in trouble for early on, like, hey, you gotta cut back the weeds, but we paved and created proper green space. So if you see on the photo on the right side, uh, we actually put one of our old barrels there. We're going to put mint and some different herbs in that in the spring. And then the dirt all the way down, we're going to put different, um, different fruiting bushes and some raspberries and stuff, something yummy for kids to snack on and that looks nice and greens up the space. We also put, took a, a bunch of our other, uh, old barrels and put them on casters and put some palms and different plants in them so that we can just have it look nice out there. It is an industrial space and that's part of the charm to it. But we want to add a little color and greenery to it wherever we can.
I saw that we did, that, that weed zone and I know that there was like, there was a bunch of asphalt and other things in there. So it was no easy task to remove that. I, I.
No, it ended up, actually, this was the site before it was turned into this was um, a brick building that they demolished right into the ground. So there's a lot of bricks. None of them said Troy on them, unfortunately, but, um, yeah, it was, it was a kind of a mission to, to rehab this. Um, but we're really happy with how it's coming together and that it's something fresh and looks nice in the neighborhood. And we're really looking forward to opening the public and start, you know, exercising our hospitality.
You mentioned the, uh, parking situation and the seating and how they interact earlier. Um, can you clarify, you said when, when there's, it's not open to the public, you guys can park in there?
Yeah.
Um, when it is open to the public, will there be both seating and parking?
No.
At the same time? No?
We could, but and, I mean, it, there is enough space to do that, but just for the comfort and safety of our patrons, we would prefer, and since there's no requirement for onsite parking, we'd prefer to just close that rolling gate and then not have any cars. That delivery van might be parked all the way in the back there, not going anywhere. Um, but aside from that, no cars coming and going, no deliveries coming and going. Um, have it just be for the public to sit and enjoy. Maybe we'll put some cornhole boards out or something so people can just enjoy themselves and not worry about traffic in any way. This area, because of the Italian, uh, center sort of across the street and over and because of the parking lot across the street, there's always so much street parking that seemed like it was fine to just have the lot be for people to enjoy themselves and not have to use it for parking.
Yeah, I, I think that's great. I think if you were to change that down the line, you know, you mentioned the brewery around the corner and how they have their outdoor seating space, you know, they have that, it's just a wo- a wooden divider made of like two-by-sixes or something. It's not going to like physically stop a car, but just, um, if you did want to change it, uh, you know, it's on your site plan, so it's not to be changed, I guess, but, um.
What we had originally had in mind was to use the planters as sort of a barricade, but then we sort of tested it out ourselves. And it, it works. But then when we had in mind to just make it a more open space where people can kind of like let their kids run around and not worry about it, we changed our plan. Um, but, yeah, we have plenty of these, uh, oak barrels with plants in them on casters. We can line up along the seating area to do what, similar to like what Rareform did with their barricade.
I just also would add though, like I've, I've made mead insider at home and it's pretty remarkable like how little needs to go into it, just like happens.
Yeah.
Basically.
It's pretty magical. We honestly also don't really have the, the, the budget or the financial appetite after all this construction to go out and buy a bunch of equipment for making things that are not in our wheelhouse or that don't share the infrastructure that we already have. And that's why, you know, we're not proposing to start making Beanie Baby. I don't know what, what we would make, but like, it's like, we're thinking of things that we can do with what we already have. That's sort of where it's coming from.
So I definitely support not having the, the vehicle parking, but how about some bike parking?
Yeah, for sure. People could bike their barks and bikes in there all day.
Love it.
Definitely, yeah.
Love it. And do you have any plans for those?
Like spiral steps.
Uh, well, they obviously have to stay because everybody knows the building for that. Um, uh, we're not going to change our name to Stairway to Heaven because we'll obviously get sued, but, um, we had in minds to like spruce them up a little bit. Apparently they used to be used by some, somebody would stand up there and bark directions to the person operating the crane, the big yellow crane that you see going across that moves throughout the whole lot. Um, so we've gotten, the contractors that did the work used to, used to go there when they were in their like late twenties to get steelwork done from the original builder of the building, Sam Bizarro. So they had a lot of stories and so many people in the neighborhood have stories of this building and we're really happy to see it fixed up, but Spiral staircase has to stay definitely not safe for like running up there and like dancing on or anything like that, but, um, it's not going anywhere for sure.
Great. Looking forward to it. Any other comments? Yeah. Yes, this is a type two action, so no seeker required.
This is actually an application for a special use permit in addition to amending the previous site plan application. So, and it is a type two, so there's no seeker required, but you would have to declare it complete and schedule it for a public hearing.
Got it. All right, well, I think there were a few staff comments for mechanical and functional information on the refrigerator unit. I, I think you addressed the idea of any kind of physical barrier, seating, parking. So that's really a good point in terms of mechanicals for the refrigerator unit.
Do you want me to just speak to that?
If you could.
Yeah, the fire department just wanted a little detail on that on the record.
So the, the refrigerator that you see there, that's painted orange and has some, says free food on it. That is part of the Albany Free Food Fridge organization. They place these refrigerators across the capital region. I think this is number 10 or 12 now. It's on its own dedicated circuit. We built this structure including like having it fully encapsulated in that way so that it's protected from the elements. It's plugged into its own GFCI ground fault outlet. It's on a dedicated circuit. It's open to the public and I can tell you that farms, including farms from Troy and from the capital region come and donate food. And as soon as the fridge is filled, it's emptied. Doesn't, food doesn't last in there for more than a day, which I think we knew that it would be a hit because there wasn't one nearby, but I don't think we were expecting it to be filling that much of a need in the, in the neighborhood, but people from all over the neighborhood stop by and it seems to be really helping to nourish the community and kids come by and look to see if there's any cheese sticks in there or strawberry, strawberries go super fast. So yeah, we made sure as with any outdoor electrical receptacle, that it was ground fault on a dedicated circuit. So from that perspective of the mechanical side of it, it's super, super safe.
Eric, does that address your?
Yeah, the, the, the request was from the fire department and building department to want to ensure that no electrical cords were being used. That's kind of a code violation.
Like an extension cord?
Yeah.
Oh, no, definitely not. It has its own dedicated wire going to it. It's shielded and then there's an outlet behind it that's ground fault and then it's plugged in directly to it.
Thank you. Do you lock it up at night or no?
No, because people come at all hours to take food from it, so.
Okay, well, unless any of the commissioners have anything else, I feel like we have enough information to clear the application completely. So I move, we declare the application complete.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and so we still need to have a public hearing on the special use permit, so would you be comfortable being on next month's agenda?
Sure. What, what is the, um, why is it needed special use permit? I'd be curious.
Uh, because the use, they're, they're changing the use from what they had with the non-alcoholic to the production of alcohol beverages. And so there are a number of uses in the that the MU one that requires special use permit that I could qualify for, either a, a brew pub or if you look industry artisan.
Right.
I don't have the exact
Makerspace.
Language, Makerspace, I think is probably the most applicable to this operation. And and that requires a special use permit in the MU one.
Thank you.
I would, I would just maybe echo the request of the applicant before me that it was possible to or whatever makes sense to y'all, but.
I mean, how does that work with a hearing?
We'd have to, could we open it for public comment now?
Well, it's just about placement.
Well, you have that, yeah, it's, it's agenda placement.
Yeah.
But it couldn't be unconcerned.
No, no, not unconcerned, but but everything's on old business. It's entirely up to the commission, specifically the chair, so it would, it'll be Roddy's call whether to do this in advance of anything else that might take longer. So anyway, we'll, we'll speak with Roddy at the beginning of next month's meeting and see.
That's good.
But you in advance of anything that might take a substantially longer time.
All right, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
All right, thanks.
So I, we didn't actually formally.
Do you want to schedule that here?
Yeah, so let's move to adjourn that for a public hearing on the October, was it eighteenth? Is that right? Eighteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, so the public hearing is scheduled. Have a good night. Right. PLPC twenty twenty-one thirty.
Good evening.
Good evening. You guys ready?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sarah Drury. I'm an engineer with Lobella Associates. I'm representing Unity House tonight. I see some new faces, so we're gonna recap a little bit. We were here in, I believe, twenty twenty-one forever ago with a project that takes one of the existing Unity House office spaces and converts it to a six-bedroom situational crisis residence. Um, the project previously, just to backtrack a little bit, so there's some backstory. Um, the project under the old zoning previously required, it started with a use variance because given the unique situation of the type of building, the, we didn't really fall into a bucket. So a bucket was determined. We weren't in the zone. A change, a use variance was allowed. That was also part of the seeker process, so seeker was completed at that time as well. We went in front of zoning again because the zone we were in required seven parking stalls. Given this space available, we were only able to fit four. We were granted a three parking stall variance. Then we came to planning. Planning gave us site plan approval and we were good to go. Due to funding and everything that's happened and the price of things, the project temporarily stalled. The project is now back, but the previous site plan approval expired and now, as we all know, the zoning has changed. So after speaking with Eric, everybody, all parties agreed that we'll submit a new site plan application, identifying what the new zone is, but understanding that the previous seeker, in our opinion, would still hold because we are under the thresholds established by the previous seeker because we are now in conformance with the available uses and we are in conformance with the parking requirements, so that parking requirements and that use variance are no longer required. All we're here tonight for, I'm hoping to keep it easy for you guys. We're just here to renew the site plan application so that they can move the project forward.
Are there any other changes to the site plan?
Nope, exactly the same, minus one, no unblasting that we accidentally left on the plant and Department of Health had us removed. But other than that, site plan is exactly the same. Four parking stalls, clearing and grubbing the overgrown weeds. Um, we are adding stairs so that they can access their rear patio and we're putting in a rear patio where it is currently just shaded dirt.
I'd like to make a motion. We mark the application as complete. That we marked the application as complete.
Second. Okay, we can do a vote? Hi. So we marked the application complete now. Sorry, under the current zoning code, we still need to schedule a public hearing even though we had a previous site plan approval. So just as a formality, we are gonna still have to open this for a public hearing. So is it okay we put you on the October agenda?
I'll see you next month.
So I move, we adjourn this application to the October eighteenth agenda for a public hearing.
Do you have any preference on where you are on the agenda?
If I get my choice, I'll go after the consent agenda guy. It, our situation depends on if Sarah Wangert's here, that I do know, because she, her firm is the architect, so most times I end up going last and hanging out with you guys at the end. So if we could do not last, great. If we have to totally understand it with Sarah's situation.
She could just step out.
Yeah, she could just, yeah, step out.
Take her out in the hall.
We've done that as a courtesy to commission members to let them leave early, but.
She missed this one, so.
Exactly.
Now she has to say for the whole thing next time.
All right, so did you make, you made a motion?
I made a motion to move. All right, so all those in favor?
Thank you.
Hearing is scheduled for October eighteenth. Thank you. All right, last item on the agenda now.
If, if I, if I could ask a question before we started on the record, Andy, the consent, consent agenda. What, what might constitute any portion of anyone's proposal to land itself on a consent agenda under the new zoning code?
There is, it's not specifically addressed in new zoning code, but I think the threshold to be able to end up on a consent agenda is that the public hearing is closed. If the public hearing is closed, that's, that's the threshold question. And then if in your opinion, or in consultation with, with Roddy as you prepare the agenda, you don't anticipate significant concerns, questions, comments, or, or issues coming from the planning board members, then I think that would be the second step. If, if you think it's ready for consideration by the planning board based upon your knowledge of how it's progressed, you know, prior comments, then I think that would be the second question. Um, if, if you believe with your understanding of it that there are no significant concerns or issues to be addressed or raised or discussed, and the public hearing is closed, you can propose on a consent agenda. The commission members always have the ability to pull it off a consent agenda or interact with the applicant, address concerns and keep it on the consent.
So I guess my follow-up would be any of those individuals that came forward seeking special use permit or, you know, as maybe an example of this previous applicant here with their site plan approvals already having been done and made. Are any of those, but you know, provided they, they fulfill further requirements, we've kind of outlined here tonight, you know, under their next meeting beforehand, you know, would those qualify at all for consent?
No, I don't think you can put anything that's subject to a public hearing on the consent agenda because it gives the appearance that regardless of what the public says, it's gonna be approved on consent, which I, I, I don't think is appropriate. There are a lot of times, as you know, that issues will come up, comments will come up as a result of the public hearing that drives a change in, in, in the project itself or changes the direction of the planning board, the planning commission members' review or consideration of. So I think the key, key threshold is to be on a consent agenda, the public hearing has to be closed.
Thank you.
In the past, Eric, we always used to do extensions of previous site plan approvals on the consent agenda for exactly that reason, that we've already reviewed the materials, nothing has changed, we're just extending it for another six months. And this last applicant was very similar to that, except for the fact that the zoning code changed.
Right.
She had to have a new public hearing.
Sure.
So otherwise, she probably would have just been on the agenda.
Thank you for clarifying.
Uh, so sorry, thank you for waiting. We've got PLPC twenty twenty-three forty-two. One thirty-three to thirty-seven, Fourth Street.
Yep, I'm there. So my name's Tom Rowland. I'm a founding partner of what is going to be No Name Cannabis Company. Uh, we're looking at opening a retail dispensary downtown Troy. We'll roll that, but this is about, um, New York State has allowed for temporary sort of cannabis grower showcases given the need for, for retail outlets for cannabis products.
All right, if you could just speak a little more directly into the mic, I can't.
Sure, how's, it's much better?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You can take it off the stand as well.
Get on in there.
Just, yeah.
Get right up in there.
So New York State has allowed regulations for temporary cannabis grower showcases. Um, I'd like to do the first one in downtown Troy. We've recently procured one thirty-nine to one thirty-three, Fourth Street, part of our package. I'm looking to utilize that lot for an open air market that will include cannabis and some other vendors. Out of the chest.
So I'm looking at the, the site plan that you provided.
Sure.
Is it the, is it that building or is it in the lot?
It's just gonna be in the parking lot.
Okay.
It'll be an open air market, so no indoor use. Um, the Rareform will be open. We're trying to include a bunch of community members and vendors sort of activate the whole street with this. Um, it's not just gonna be a cannabis market, you know, like we're gonna have food vendors things of that nature when we can. Depending their acceptance. Everyone has been on board that I've talked to in person so far, but for the, you know, the majority of the market will be outdoors.
And then how, um, how frequent is this market?
I'm proposing every Saturday, ten to six, until it starts snowing, basically. Yeah.
We, we still have some Zoom attendees, so I don't know if you want to see if there's anybody that wants to speak.
Sure, well, this one is also gonna require a public hearing, correct? Yeah, so we can just wait and do all that public hearing. So for anybody on Zoom who didn't catch that, since this is gonna require a public hearing, if you did want to comment on this application, you'll have the opportunity to do so at the public hearing, which will presumably be next month, although we'll, we'll get to that in a second. Did any other commissioners have any comments or questions for additional information from the applicant while we have him here?
So people won't be able to consume?
No, New York State does not allow consumption onsite. So this will just be purchasing and kind of taking with you.
Well, there is a separate license for that, right? But that's not.
Uh, there is talk of cannabis consumption. But that, that's not incorporated into this and those regulations haven't been passed by New York State yet, so.
Got it.
So this is probably a stupid question, but uh, somebody buys your stuff.
Yeah.
And go around the corner and light up. That's.
There's nothing I can do about that. New York State has made it legal to consume cannabis in any place that you can consume cigarettes. So I mean, we're gonna try to discourage that because, you know, we don't, that's not really, it's not supposed to be like a smoking session or things like that. It's more of like a farmer's market, no.
So a practical question, how are you going to prevent like hit and run robberies or anything like that?
Yeah, so the way New York State has set up these cannabis grower showcases is all the product has to be stored in a secure location. The tables have limited products on them. There's like an order form. The consumers kind of come through, fill out their order form, and then there's like a checkout stand where that's gonna happen. It'll all kind of be centralized, but there'll also be limited product for these events. And then, you know, we'll do periodic, if the like dollar amount of goods sold gets too high, we'll do periodic, you know, take that away and put it in a safe, just so we're avoiding that. And we're also gonna have private security.
Oh, okay, good.
We don't want like people walking around with security shirts that are menacing, again, not the look we're trying to say, but there will be, you know, the proper precautions taken. So are those folks gonna be responsible for stopping people from consuming onsite as well? Everyone that's involved, as far as vendors and things, know that consumption's not allowed and, you know, we're trying to play nice with the state of New York because this is also new and we're trying to keep it on the proper trajectory. So we'll kind of self-police, but, you know, we'll tell them to, if anyone is consuming, to say, hey, you know, you can't do that on this site. You'd like to go to your home or some other location, that's fine, but not here.
Yeah, I think Suzanne's comment and James's, it's worth considering when the public hearing opens because I'm interested that that is gonna be a question that members of the public are gonna have.
Absolutely.
And so being able to, you know, not just play nice with New York State, but also with the neighbors.
Sure.
Important thing.
Yeah.
Just to keep in mind.
So there's a lot of consumption happening on that block as is, but I think that, you know, a crowd of people will sort of help deter that actually, because, you know, right now it's still kind of taboo for the cannabis that they're consuming, well, the, the normal consumers. Um, so if we have a large crowd of people and, you know, we're, uh, the, some of the market, some of the vendors that we're reaching out to are not for profits, like Mohawk Community Society has expressed interest, so there will be like a lot of activity to keep people from hopefully doing things we don't want them to do.
Co- couple of things you should be prepared to address and put on the record at the public hearing.
Yep.
Uh, keep in mind, this is new for all of us.
Absolutely, yeah.
In your submission, the PowerPoint submission that you included with your application, on slide six, uh, it states that once approved by OCM.
Yeah.
So if you need an approval from the state to conduct these events.
You do.
Okay, and so make sure you put that on the record and, and state whether or not you have that approval. And then on slide seven, which is entitled, what the growers showcases are not, it states it's not authorization for growers and processors to make sales directly to customers.
Right.
So it wasn't clear to me what exactly, who can actually walk up and buy cannabis at your event, so please make sure you clarify that on the record.
Sure, yeah. Um, do you want me to do that now or wait for a public hearing?
If you want to do it twice, that's great. I'd love to know the answer because it, it sounds to me like it, it's not a flea market where you can go buy pot. It's, it's for growers and processors.
To show off the product.
To show off and to mingle and
Exactly.
Sell things to each other. It's not, it's not for the public at large to come buy cannabis.
Well, it, it's actually for both. So they're calling it cannabis grower showcase and the way that they're, the way that the sales are happening, right, is that the the way that the sales are happening, right, is that the cultivators cannot sell directly to the public. That's why at least one card licensee holder. Um, in this case, it's not going to be me. It's going to be a partner that we're working with in Albany because my license is still provisional, pending the um, New York State Veterans injunction that's currently happening. Um, but so essentially what happens is um, you know, like I said, there's this order sheet. Each um, cultivator will have a table and they'll have, you know, a limited amount of product on it. They can talk about the product. They can show the, the strains and flower that they have or the pre-rolls that they have. And then the public fills out an order form and then goes to a table that is um, run by the card licensee who's the, the licensee who is authorized to distribute this product, right? And then they will buy it from them. So essentially what we're doing is showing off our cultivators, moving their product through the point of sale, um, that would be the licensee holder.
So the growers slash cultivators and the processors are not directly selling to the customers. They're, they're showing their wares and then somebody can then go to somebody who is authorized
And purchase.
to sell to and purchase. And it's all the same event.
Exactly. Yes.
Correct.
It's, you guys were clear on that, right?
Yeah.
Well, it took me a second, especially with all the, the acronyms. It, it took me a second to figure out that that's what was happening, but yeah, I got there as well.
My suggestion would be do yourself a favor, do us a favor.
Yeah.
And walk through the process. It's public hearing, simple steps, plain English, explain it to all of us.
Yep.
Because it's all new to everybody.
Absolutely.
And you'll be able to throw your PowerPoint up on the projector and do a whole presentation for everybody for our benefit and for the public's benefit.
And, and I would definitely highly recommend like steering clear of the, the acronyms because
Yeah.
that, that's what took me like several times to figure out.
New York State loves their acronym.
So, so can I ask, where, where are your schematic? Will the filming table be?
So we're looking at putting that back towards uh, if you're looking at it, it is sort of at the corner of where the building is.
Yeah.
And a lot like right there in that corner.
You mentioned earlier about the, the breweries uh, participation and they have outdoor seating there already and it looks like on the.
So that's going away as of next week.
Okay. Just for the weather or?
Yeah, for a sort of temporary thing. We're scaling it back. A lot of that lot's going to be utilized for um, parking and for the dispensary when it happens. So we're just sort of narrowing it down and sort of prepping for this event. Yeah.
Okay. So this lot will now be used predominantly for parking and then on Saturdays for
Correct.
your showcases.
Yep.
Got it. And the parking is what I see striped underneath where the tables are sketched out?
Right. Correct. At least on that wall.
Yeah.
Just kind of for scale and reference.
I would be uh, bear with my duties if I didn't note on the uh, complete streets form. It is actually on the bike network. It's on, it's on a primary.
Oh, okay.
But it, I don't think it's material to your, your application, but it was on the primary.
All right. Yeah. I was looking at the map, like there's a link right on the beach streets and there's no route drawn in there. And I was like, well, I mean, there's definitely a paved road, but so, yeah.
It's the, the map, the, the map is not the clearest of in the world, but it, it's there.
All right.
James, switch the wheel off.
Well, that's good.
Mars.
All right. Any other commissioner questions or comments? So I think that the application looks complete to me. Other.
I'll second.
All right. Going to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we declare the application complete. And then uh, would you like to be on the October agenda for the public hearing?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So we'll adjourn this uh, for a public hearing on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I move, I should say. Then we can do that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. You are on the October agenda.
Great. Thank you.
See you next month.
We'll see you then. Okay. Sure. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I am.
I would like to make that motion to adjourn.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.